Which one is it?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Members of the public are welcome to attend in person. They may also choose to watch the meeting at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. The first item on the agenda this evening is announcements. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, December 16th at 5:30 p.m. and Tuesday, January 6th at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, December 9th at 5:30 p.m. Unless noted, all meetings of the City Council are held here in the chambers. The next item is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience or online to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online, ma'am.
We will then move on. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
Nothing from staff.
Members of the council, thank you. We will move on. The next item is the consent agenda. This is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Mrs. Collins?
No one online, ma'am.
City Manager Lindberg?
Not from staff.
Members of the council, may I have a motion, please, to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. And we are at the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is a public hearing, and this is the ordinance establishing the 2026 fees and charges. And presenting this evening is our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Alyssa Ryan. Mrs. Ryan, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Before you tonight is for the adoption of the ordinance establishing the 2026 fees and charges schedule. This is an annual item. The fee schedule in your packet is consistent with what was provided at the September 9th work session. The fees have been included and incorporated into the 2026 budget. Utility rates were informed by the utility rate study, but also discussed in September. City policy guides how rates are set using five criteria. Each fee is examined as part of the budget process. More information about the budget process is available on our website. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Deputy Chief Financial Officer Ryan? Yeah, thank you. You know, the thing is, we do this in such an excellent way throughout the year that there are no surprises, so we know what the fees and charges are going to be and what the percentage are, so thank you very much. Members of the council, this is a public hearing. I will now open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Council members, I need... We're going to recess till 6 o'clock so that we can hold the truth and taxation public hearing and approve the budget and tax levy. So we will stand in recess, and we will reconvene at 6:00. Good evening and welcome back. I will now recon... It's 6 o'clock, and I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council to... City Council meeting. And the next item on the agenda is 5B, and this is our truth and taxation public meeting. Resolutions establishing the 2026 property tax levy and adopting the 2026 budget and adopting the 2026 2030 capital improvement plan. Presenting this evening is our Deputy City Manager and CFO, Mrs. Jenny Rhodey. CFO Rhodey, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Tonight, we're here to review the final budget and tax levy adoption. Just a couple kind of high-level points. We've balanced the 2026 budget to the 7.4% tax levy. That is similar or the same levy we talked about at the September 16th proposed levy adoption. The impact to the median value home is approximately $9 per month. Overall, taxable market value in the city increased about 2.7% or $253 million for taxes payable in 2026. With the 7.4% levy and the 2%... 2.7% market value increase, that increased the tax rate from 45.8% to approximately 48.7% for taxes payable in 2027. With that, we did have a number of budget effectiveness corrections along the way, certainly from the time departments entered their budgets to the proposed budget. We did make about $1.9 million in corrections to balance that budget. Those were a combination of some increased revenue projections, reductions across departments in expenditures, and also reduced personnel expenses. We did remove two full-time positions that were open, that were planned as part of the org analysis, two division coordinator positions, as well as a part-time position, so that... And reallocated a portion of the EDA levy to the general fund to come up with that $1.9 million to balance the budget to the 4... To the 7.7... Or 7.4%, excuse me. Along those lines, we have continued in 2025 to complete studies in 20... For the 2024 budget, we realized we needed to start completing capital studies in all of our areas to really inform future budgets and capital plans. So in 2024, we've done... Or 2024, we completed three studies and five, I believe, in 2025. So part of our plan for 2026 is to continue with additional capital studies. Those include the ITF study, sidewalk and trail, street lighting, city-owned property, and parks and security improvement study. So those are planned for next year. Additionally, the organizational analysis that really looks at service, staffing levels, and compensation across the organization, that was completed in January of 2025 to inform this year's budget for 2026. We are planning to update that in January for the 2027 budget. So that is something we look at annually to really inform what are our plans, what are... What do we need? What are our priorities in terms of staffing across the organization? We've also completed a fire department standards of cover that did call for 23 FTEs across the next five years, a communications assessment to really help plan the strategic direction of the communications department and staffing going forward, as well as IT studies that included a security assessment, a capital plan, as well as an operation... Operational study. The financial management plan, property tax projections, the first... For the next five years, 2026 is 7.4%. Planned for 2027 or projected for 2027 at this time is 7.69%. That is the final year of that five-year non-binding resolution that was... That began with the 2023 budget. Projections in the final three years of the five-year plan are 7% at this time to fund current operations. The proposed 2026 tax levy, in total, across the organization is $58,411,623, an increase of just over $4 million in total over 2025. That's a 7.4% change. On this table, you can see that relocation from EDA to the city level... To the city levy to really help fund general fund operations for 2026. Revenues and other sources, this page, you can see property tax levies... Our property taxes are the largest single source of revenue for the city at just over $58 million in total planned for 2026. That's about 39% of the total revenues of the city. The next category, the next highest category, is about $42 million in charges for services. A majority of those come from the utility funds, water and sewer and stormwater. And there are other charges across the city, certainly user fees in our ICE Center and golf course, as well as EMS charges in the general fund and other parks and other departmental service charges across the organization. Other taxes of $12.9 million include franchise fees for the utilities, as well as franchise fees for cable, the cable franchise fee fund. So that's $12.9 million in total. Intergovernmental revenue, about $9.9 million. That is down from last year, and that really reflects... Last year was our final year of our... We've gone through our final year of ARPA funding, so there is a decline in intergovernmental revenues for that. So if you look at the last few years, that balance, that amount would be higher. And again, transfers, bond proceeds, other revenues. Other revenues does include investment income of about $2 million, licenses and permits of $2.8 million, and then assessments at $2 million. So for a total across all funds of the organization of $151 million for 2026. Expenditures and other uses, personnel services or investment in our people is really the biggest cost or the biggest expense for the budget at about $62.8 million. Really, you know, that's the cost of our people and benefits. I mean, we've also had increases in health insurance costs and things like that, so certainly that line item recognizes all of those benefits across all departments. Capital investment of $36 million, that's our investment in, you know, infrastructure, whether that's water and sewer infrastructure, storm sewer, streets, fleet, you know, our investment in our fleet vehicles, including fire, police, public works, all departments, IT capital investments, and facilities, facilities maintenance and investment. Current expenditures of $34.9 million recognizes pretty... All those things we do, we need daily to do our work, you know, supplies, maintenance, training, other professional services and things like that. And then the final two, debt service, is really payment of principal and interest on bonds issued to fund capital investments in prior years, and for a total of about $157.2 million in expenditures across the organization. And that includes all funds. One thing, we kind of always mention this, but we do... There are a few adjustments that have happened since the final budget. They don't change the tax levy, but really there are always refinements in expenditures, revenues as well. So we did have, you know, some final adjustments for revenues and expenditures. We did have some payroll tax savings for the well-being leave program. We found out late September that we were approved to do our own well-being programs, so we don't have those payroll taxes. So we'll continue with the plan that we have or that we've had for the past year, and we can go forward.
Councilmember Keely.
Can you clarify what program that that... From the state, what the state calls it versus what we're going to call it?
Oh, gosh, now you've... I don't know if I have... I just am so used to our name, I don't know if I've got there.
Sick and safely.
Sick and sa...
Or is it the fam...
Family.
Family.
Medical.
Family medical, okay, thank you.
HR to the rescue.
Yes, thanks, Mike, for the assist.
I like our name better, I think well-being is...
Yep. I do, too. And it'll be a savings, a savings for us, a savings for employees. It'll be, you know, continue our existing program, so it'll be seamless, yes, from year to year. We also did include safer grant positions. We were notified in September that we did receive the safer grant. We applied for 12 positions. We did get nine full-time firefighter positions. We already, you know, we did have some funds in there for positions, so we did include the remaining six. We had three, we have... We included the remaining six in the budget because we did accept the grant in October, so we are... We will be required to hire those and maintain those positions. So that was relatively revenue neutral for 2026 because we are receiving reimbursement from the feds for about 75% of those expenditures, so.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify...
Councilmember Keely.
Those are all firefighter positions.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, you've been at the dais for a little while. Do you ever remember a safer or a COPS grant for nine positions in one round?
No. The first time around when we did the COPS, that was in the 90s. Mid to late 90s when we got... I think it was 97 when we had COPS.
Nine positions approved? That seems like the... That's the largest one I ever remember.
I'm not quite sure what the number was, but there was quite a few. But that was during the Clinton COPS program where we had to... And so we were beneficiaries of that program. But I don't know if it was nine or what, but we did... It helped kickstart because we were in a deficit also back then with regard to how many police officers we had, just like we have been in a deficit with our firefighter, and now we're getting... Getting where we're meeting what we need for both police and fire.
Right. I know we've applied many times and most times were rejected, so to get approved on a request for 12 and to get nine approved was...
A big deal.
Incredibly good news, yeah, a really big deal. Thank you.
Yep. I should mention, too, those nine safer grant positions are included, and the one community risk reduction position that is being funded through the opioid funds. So there is a total of 10 additional firefighter paramedic positions.
Mostly in the first few years through the grant.
Yeah. For most of the next five-year period, well, yeah, so the nine are funded in a large portion over the next three years, and then the one is also funded almost fully through opioid for the next five years anyway.
Excellent.
The next item we did as part of our commitment to kind of maintaining our compensation study and maintaining our... That 75th percentile in terms of where we want to be in the market. Every other year, we're looking at... We're going out and doing a market check and also, you know, looking at what similar positions in other cities are, you know, where they're at, and looking at our own internal equity, as well as, you know, what our organization... What our organization is, and, you know, looking at the budget. We did allocate about $78,000 for some positions that were out of alignment with that compensation study and with that market check, so that was included. We were able to do that with some of those payroll savings, payroll tax savings. Additionally, we did make some other minor additions, some cybersecurity investments, some additional resources for arts commission work, and some other minor changes. With that, just want to take a look, review the FTEs and just highlight, this is the same... The same table you saw in September, or actually August, with the inclusion of the additional six firefighters. So just wanted to show that. That does bring the additional FTEs in 2026 from 338.5 to 349.2, an increase of 10.7 FTEs, but that does include all nine safer positions.
What's the OA 2026 column?
That was kind... That was our beginning of the year, kind of, you know, when we did the OA in January, where we thought we would be, and as we worked through the budget process, that kind of P 2026 or proposed 2026 is really... This is what we're proposing for in the budget.
Organizational analysis, 2026 is up to OA?
Yep. Sorry. That was... I should have... I should have said that. And anyway, that was what was presented in January.
Thank you.
Just a quick look at taxable market value across the city. As we said, we are at about $9.7 billion. This is how it is allocated between property types, with residential being our largest category. Residential properties did increase about 3% overall across the city. We saw a 5% increase in commercial industrial values for P 2026, so that was one of the largest... That was the largest area of increase. And apartments declined about 3% in value, so they are... Make up about 15% of the total. So as we see property shifts, we'll see a little, you know, that will show up, too, in tax statements as people look at their market values. There are some shifts there in terms of where, you know, where those increases are. With that, this is our... We usually kind of like to look at the five-year history on some of these areas, property tax increases. As you can see, here is the five-year history on our increases year over year, with 2026 proposed at 7.4%. You can also see the city tax rate. That is a function of increases in market value, as well as property tax changes and other adjustments, but we are at 48.6%. In 2022, we were at about 43%. With that, our estimated market value, or kind of more of our total market value within the city, you can see we started at $7.9 billion. In 2022, we were at $9.99 billion. This is the most up-to-date information we have from the county, so I think we were just over $10 billion in September, but with final market value adjustments that were done by the county, we're at now $9.99, with the median home value at $356,500. So that also has increased quite a bit over the last five years, starting in 2022 with Additional information. For more information on the budget, we certainly have all of our... All of our information, all of our presentations, capital studies, all presentations from throughout the year are included on our budget landing page. It does include information on property tax statements and valuation notices, and where you can contact information for... You can go for questions on valuations. And also information on property tax assistance programs that are offered by the state Minnesota Department of Revenue. So there is... There are links and phone numbers for people to contact those different agencies for more information. With that, I seem to be missing a slide off the end. I usually like to go through the different motions for the evening, and so tonight, the next, we'll have our TNT hearing, and then the council will act on the resolutions for the budget and tax levy. After that, the meeting will... You'll recess the meeting. We will convene the EDA meeting and act on the EDA... You'll act on the EDA levy resolution. Once that's complete, that meeting will be adjourned, and we will reconvene the City Council meeting where you will act on approval of the EDA levy at that time. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Members of the council, questions for Deputy City Manager, CFO Rhodey? I think one of the things that might be also interesting for people to know is how long we've been going through this whole process. So I know that you usually put up the...
Oh, yeah.
The schedule of all of the meetings that we've had since March, when we first start to look at the budget, go through each of it so that people know that this is something that we work on throughout the whole year to get to this point.
Yeah, I can kind of walk through the meeting schedule. In January, mid-January, we reviewed the 2026 organizational analysis that really looks at our staffing, service levels, and compensation, really our people resources across the organization. In March, we updated the 10-year financial management plan, or FMP. Our financial advisors, Ellers, assist us with that, and it really does help us update the financial plans for all our property tax levy funded funds and kind of set that stage or set that table for the budget work ahead. Our departments are starting their budgets in March, and that work... Much of that work happens March through June. So in July, we had our CIP, our work session, where we discussed the annual capital improvement plan, as well as the five-year plan, and all of the funds that are impacted by capital expenditures. In August of 20... Of this year, we talked about the operating budget and all the tax levy funded funds, so really the largest of which being the general fund or the main operating fund of the city, but the remaining funds that are impacted, or remaining operating funds that are impacted by the tax levy. September 9th, we discussed the utility rate study and the fee schedule, as well as the remainder of the enterprise fund, so really the utility funds, as well as our ICE Center, golf course, and Ames Center at that time. And on September 16th, we had the proposed tax levy approval and proposed budget approval. So that's where we've come from. We've... Since that time, again, we've been finalizing budget numbers, and we're coming to you with the 7.4% increase that is the same as what we presented at the proposed.
Very good. Councilmember Keely.
Couple questions, follow-up. Number one, just for comparison, the state of Minnesota's budget, coming from cities, counties, township schools, special taxing districts, cities are contributing $4 billion, $4 billion with a B. That's an 8.7% increase over 2025, so we're about a point and a half below that, which is good. We should be well below that. And the prior year was 6.9%, so pretty stiff increase in 2026. And I know there's a lot of cities similar to us or geographically close by that are experiencing double-digit increases in their levy once again. In some cases, I've spoken to a few of those, and I've asked, like, why is it 11% or 12%? And they said, well, we have a 2% or 3% special levy for a special project, a one-off project, so it's a levy in just that one year to help pay for it. Some of those are voter-sponsored or supported, in the case of some of our neighboring cities that go to the taxpayers and ask them, do you want your taxes to go up 3% or 4% next year to pay for this particular improvement project? The other thing I wanted to ask is, could you go back to the slide that shows the forecast for the future years? Is the 7.69 and the 7.77, do those include... Is the seven point six nine and the seven seven seven, do those include, um, an estimate for the EDA that is back to the one point five million, or is it using a smaller number?
Um, it's using a smaller number right now. Um, so we, we reallocated eight hundred thousand from the EDA levy to the city levy. So, starting in twenty twenty six, that projection reflects that.
It stays, it stays that way. So instead of putting one point five million each year or not putting, growing the number by one point five, we're going to grow it by seven hundred thousand, and the rest is reflected in the general levy portion of the equation. Okay.
Correct. And that general levy includes, majority of that's the general fund, but also includes, um, the infrastructure trust fund, equipment and vehicle fund, and, um, IT capital fund, as well as debt service levies.
Sure. Uh, you might want to explain to the viewing audience what nine, the non-binding resolution years, why six and seven have yes, and eight, nine and thirty have no.
So in, um, starting in, with the twenty twenty three budget, um, at that time, um, the city council approved, um, an organizational analysis to really catch up on our staffing across departments, um, um, and really, you know, fund that staffing over a five-year period. We did start with a larger increase, but at that time, we talked about, these are the, these are the out-year projections we had in the five-year plan, and it was council's wish that we include that in the resolution and that we keep to those. Um, they were varying just a little above seven percent for the remaining four years. So that non-binding resolution, if you do look in the tax levy resolution, there is, that is included for each year. And we, yeah, we've come to say the non-binding resolution. I'm not sure that's very, um, very descriptive, but it is really a non-binding commitment to stick to that plan from twenty twenty three.
And one final, you noted, um, one point nine million in efficiencies. Um, that's not the word you used. What was it?
Um, effectiveness corrections.
Effectiveness corrections.
Partly because part of it was an adjustment, and so I wanted to make sure that that was.
And some of it was efficiencies. As you noted, there was, I think, three and a half FTE equivalents, uh, was part of the reduction, or not choosing to do it, even though it was in the budget to do so, to try and mitigate this. Um, I, I think that's becoming important because I know over the last five years, that staff efficiency or budget efficiencies has grown from one point two or three or four to now pushing two million. And, um, I don't know how many rabbits you have left in your hat, but, um, that's getting tough. And seeing in the next year of six, seven point six nine percent, I remember three years ago, there was a five percent number in the future forecast. And now we're two points above that, or maybe a point and a half, because I think it was five point something. And I think in this time that we're coming off of this absurd amount of inflation that has driven costs for, for everybody, consumers have felt it, governments, everybody that buys products and services has felt it. Um, it's, it is slowing down, but it's unfortunately very slow to show up in our numbers. Uh, where I would rather see something in the five percent in twenty twenty seven, it's actually escalating even higher, uh, which is disappointing. So w- we're going to have our work cut out for us to pull this train, slow this train of escalating costs, uh, back to realism because honestly, five years of seven point something is really not sustainable. And, and it looks like it's going to be seven something going into the future. And, you know, nobody can afford that. I mean, nobody's getting seven percent. Ah, I can't say nobody. Somebody out there is giving seven percent raises, but majority of Americans and working-class folk are not getting seven percent increases every year. And so somehow, we've got to find a solution to slow this inflationary, uh, cost drivers and what we're doing as a city. And we're not alone. I mean, every city across the country is talking about the exact same thing. Like, how do we pull the reins back? How do we control? You're already doing it, and you have every year, uh, with, uh, City Manager Lindberg has told us, like, we have worked to grind out savings, to, to not do this, to cut back on this, to find a cheaper cost for this. And that's that efficiency number, right? To come up with this one point some million just to get us to seven percent, that's, and it's getting harder and harder. So I don't know how we're going to do it, but we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and figure out a way, because, like, I mean, I, I understand why we are here, and it's, um, difficult for those of us who like to see lower property taxes to just say no. Um, some of us just say no. Um, but, but, you know, it isn't as easy as just say no, right? I mean, the solution isn't like, all right, no, we're just going to cut it. Um, that means, you know, potentially cuts to public safety or other things, and we can't do that. I mean, boy, we can't do that. I mean, I think everybody understands that, right? Uh, safety is paramount over everything else in the city. So I don't know how we're going to get there, but those numbers are very concerning for me, especially next year to see it just continue to escalate up. Thank you.
I think it's concerning for all of us, but the thing is, we know that when we keep saying no, or else we don't meet the need for services, then we're finding ourselves really backfilling what we had said no to. And, um, so it is always a challenge, but I trust the work that, uh, you all do. Um, Deputy City Manager CFO Rhodey and, uh, City Manager Lindberg and the entire staff working together to make sure that we meet the needs of the people, but at the same time, how do we continue to, uh, address the cost issue? And there are other pressures that we have to deal with because there are outside pressures, and it's not just the cost of delivery of service. It's the other costs also that we have, uh, are impacted with, like everybody else. You mentioned, um, healthcare, insurance, those that continues to go up. It doesn't go down. So these are all of the different pressures that we deal with, but we'll get there. Um, are there any other questions for, um, Mrs. Rhodey before I open the meeting up? Okay, thank you. Stay put. Uh, and, uh, this is a public meeting, and I have one person who signed up to speak on this item, and that is Mrs. Osborne. Mrs. Osborne, would you please come to, yes, right. Yes. And give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cheyenne Osborne. I live at six oh eight Chateau Circle in Burnsville. This is my first ever meeting. I will not bore you and say I'm smart or know all what you're talking about. This is brand new, and I thought I'd just step forward and say everything somebody just said for me. Um, Councilman Keely, um, I understand exactly where some of these issues come from. I work for Ucare for maybe two more weeks. I don't know if I have a job. Um, we were bought out by Medica, and, um, they don't have room for eight hundred and some employees. So I did not get a nine percent, I don't know where you get the seven. On my tax paperwork, it says nine point one two. It doesn't matter. It's still more than I got a raise for last year, even if I could keep the raise. And, um, I understand the cost of the healthcare because I work at Ucare. I know the reason we are losing our company is because we couldn't afford all the pharmacy bills for all the Medicare and Medicaid patients. So I understand the struggles, and I realize you guys have been working on this for months. I'm not changing anybody's minds. I'm not here to blame anybody, but I want to say I agree. It's unsustainable. Every year, everything around me goes up more. It's not just my property taxes, it's my groceries. My milk alone went up twenty percent in the last two years. Everything. My chiropractor, it, that went up ten percent. Um, so if everybody raises everything somewhere between seven and twelve percent, and I'm getting a three percent raise, pretty soon, I'm not only not, maybe I'm living in a safe community, but maybe I can't even live in the community anymore. Maybe I have to move because I can't afford it anymore. I mean, even the cost of the insurance on my home has gotten so phenomenal, I hear people saying, yeah, I have to, I illegally canceled my insurance on my home, and then it caught on fire, and now I have no house and I have no insurance. And I don't know how I'm going to pay my bills in the next couple of months if I, you know, do lose my job. And this percentage is not going to make a difference on whether I've lost my job or not. I'm just, I just wanted to say my piece, and thank you for putting all the work you guys do. I'm sure it's a lot, and I appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate everything you had to say because I felt like you knew there were people out here who hadn't heard some of the stuff you talked about, and I'm, I'm glad that you shared. And I just wanted to express my thoughts. And I was hoping all those new apartments you guys were building in Burnsville were helping, um, but apparently it's not helping enough. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in, Mrs. Osborne, and sharing your, your thoughts with us. It's very important to us. And, um, I know it's frustrating when we're all dealing with affordability in, in our community and in our country. So we will continue to do our best to provide the services that you expect from us. And at the same time, how do we manage the cost of all of that? So thank you for coming in.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think Councilmember Schultz has pushed her button. Can I just respond to the young lady? Um, I think mine went up nine or ten percent as well. This, what you see is the blended average of the whole city, and so any given property could be above or below that number. In your case, you were above. Mine was a little higher than that as well.
Yeah, mine too. Uh, Councilmember Schultz.
And I know this gets joked about a little bit, but it's, it's not a joke for me. Um, I, I will not be voting for this. It's not that I don't think staff hasn't done a great job. They have. Our staff really has done a really good job on this. I'm appreciative of the, um, non-binding resolution, um, and trying to fulfill that. Um, but the reason why I vote no isn't because it's easy, or I think it's a cavalier attitude. It's because I look at the costs and I see the costs are not sustainable. And what we're doing is not sustainable, and we're not the only ones. Like, we're not the only ones trying to figure this out. And quite a bit of this is driven by people costs, right? It's the majority of costs in a city. Um, and one of the areas of people costs is our first responders. And we do need to have a safe city. We need our police, we need our fire, we need our ambulance, and they do an amazing job. Um, they are also looking at their call volumes that are skyrocketing. And again, this is not a Burnsville thing. This is that everyone is experiencing this. And when I look at those numbers, we cannot tax our way out of this situation. There's not enough money out there to keep on that trajectory. And so what I ask and what I keep hoping, um, is that we're starting to look, and I do know our police and fire are looking at this, um, but I'm hoping council can start to look at, how do we look at things before they're a problem that is expensive to deal with and clean up? How do we start preventing things? How do we start bringing those call volumes down, not because people are afraid to call, but because there's not the need to call? And there's no silver bullet on any of that. It's going to be fifty different things that are going to need to be done, and we won't, we won't see the benefit from it for a couple years. But, I mean, it's just like the planting the tree thing, right? Best time was twenty years ago, next best time is like today. So that's what I'm hoping. If we want to get these costs under control, that's the area we need to start focusing on. I'm glad our staff is focusing on it. I, I, I know our council would like to focus on that, too. It is a difficult thing to do. Um, and it's also a difficult thing to justify on time and expense doing that, because then you have to prove a negative, right? But I'm telling you, that call volume that we are expecting our first responders to deal with and why we're having to keep growing that area, it is a hockey stick. We cannot tax our way out of this. So I will be voting no, and it is, it's not a joke, and it's not cavalier. So.
Thank you. Now, I know that only one person signed up, um, to speak this evening. However, if you want to talk about your tax statement, our Deputy City Manager and Fin, um, and Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Rhodey, and also our Finance Director, um, Mrs. Alyssa Ryan is back here. They will be happy to talk with you about all of that. Also, if you look at your tax statement, and the value of your property has gone up, and that is one of the factors, it is at the County Assessors Office that that can be adjusted. And, uh, Mrs. Rhodey and, um, Mrs. Ryan can help you with all of that, and when those meetings take place at the County Assessors Office. So I don't know if there's anyone else who would like to, um, address us, but we have, um, Mrs. Rhodey and, um, Mrs. Ryan, who will be happy to go over your, uh, statements with you tonight. So, but if there's someone else who wishes to address us. But thank you so much for coming in, uh, and, uh, in this cold evening. And, um, and we understand, we think about it, and we struggle with it throughout the year. But it's not just each year. We do it throughout the whole year, year after year, thinking about the cost and what it's going to mean uh, to all of you and to all of us, and at the same time, meet what you expect from us. So, uh, and it's not an easy, easy job to do, but we will continue to do our best because we understand. Uh, my, uh, my, my taxes also went up, but I looked at it, and it was my, the value of my property went up. So that's a factor that draws to all of that. And then you look at what the school district does. But tonight, we're only looking at what the city does. And that's what, um, we're sharing with you tonight is our, the budget. That's what we have control over, and the levy. The county has control on the assessed value of your property. So, Mrs. Rhodey, if you have any, um, remarks about, uh, when does that meeting take place? Is it in April?
Um, so, um, early in the year, around March, um, the county sends out, um, the valuation notices and with your property tax statements as well. And so at that time, they're setting the valuation, you know, in early twenty twenty six for taxes payable in twenty twenty, twenty seven. So if there are concerns or questions, that's a great time to reach out to the county and have them take a second look if you want to, or, um, just, you know, they might be able to answer some questions about, um, changes in property values, um, at that time. But early in the year, because once those valuations are set, those are, um, the foundation for the next year's property tax statements.
Very good. Seeing nobody else who had signed up, uh, to speak, um, we will now then move on. Um, with the, uh, public portion, um, closed at this time, it isn't a public hearing, but it's a public meeting, so I don't have to open and close it. But, um, members of the council, tonight, we are asked to adopt the resolution for the twenty twenty six levy and the resolution on the twenty twenty six budget and the twenty twenty six, twenty thirty capital improvements program. May I have a motion to adopt the following resolutions?
Move to approve?
Second.
Here's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
And the clerk has the division of the House. Thank you. Thank you. I will now recess the Burnsville City Council meeting so the Economic Development Authority meeting can proceed. President Gustafson, the meeting is yours.
Madam Mayor, good evening. I call the Economic Development Authority meeting to order. The clerk will please note that all commissioners are present. Are there any additions to the final agenda? Seeing none, I will move on to item number two, our consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes from October 21st, 2025. Is there anyone who wishes an item to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Keely.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And it passes. We move on to our regular item, which is a resolution adopting the Burnsville Economic Development Authority EDA 2026 Property Tax Levy and Budget. Jennifer Rhodey, our Deputy City Manager, CFO and EDA Assistant Treasurer is presenting.
Thank you. The levy proposed is $700,000 for taxes payable in 2026. Total expenditures have, do show a reduction over our budget for 2025. Those are reflective of of just needs and I do believe we're going to have some budget savings in 2025. So that that 2026 budget just reflects reflects those changes and shifts. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? I do have one question and Commissioner Keely kind of brought it up. As we, we are lowering the EDA levy.
Correct.
In order to, at one point, the EDA levy was was kind of created when we did this a few years ago when we started bringing it up, is to give us money for investment and partnerships in our city to help grow our tax base in the city. And at what point are we looking at bringing that back where we can start putting that away again?
Building.
Or if we're building?
Yeah, building the fund.
Generally speaking, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but we do show a small increase year over year. So we're not keeping, right now, the financial management plan includes about a $50,000 increase year over year. If we look at the kind of the fund balance or the what's in the fund, we did have, you know, more positive results than we had planned initially. So we are in a cash position that reflects where we, we're ahead of where we thought we would be at this time. So, you know, if we look back to that 2023 plan, we really are still kind of in line with where we thought or we're actually ahead. So we'll we'll monitor that every year and see, you know, where are we ending up? Are we, you know, are we still building fund balance and are we still in a position that we thought we'd be and we'll have those discussions at the time, even with each budget.
Yeah, because I I also thought that the plan to build that fund so we can be good partners in economic development and making sure that we grow the tax base. It's another way for us to get at the cost of things is growing the tax base.
Yeah, and with that, we do have those additional Laha funds that we are receiving. So that's helping us to make more investments in housing.
They did make you feel better, the Laha money that's coming in. Maybe you want to explain what Laha is?
Yeah, so Laha is a local area.
The local area.
Funding that is, comes from a.
Housing assistance.
Yeah, housing assistance that comes from a sales tax, annual sales tax that the legislature approved, I believe, in 2023. The city does receive about eight hundred, will, starting in '25, receive about $800,000 annually. And so throughout this year, we've been talking about the different types of housing programs and investments that we will be making with those funds. And we do expect those, for the time being, we do expect those to continue. And so that has helped us make an investment in an area of one of the, one of the reasons also, we wanted to increase that levy is we also wanted to be able to make some of those additional investments. So this is helping us to do that.
Okay. City Manager Lindberg.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, EDA president. Specifically, Jenny did a nice job answering the question. Specifically, the council head implemented a plan for the 2023 budget that projected as an example for the 2026 projected budget of EDA investment fund balance of $3.8 million with the changes that have been implemented and discussed today and the reduction to the EDA levy. That projected balance will be 4.9 million if my notes are correct. So I'm looking to generate it.
That makes sense. We are ahead of where we thought we would be at this point. So that was also one of the reasons we thought we could make that shift.
Makes sense.
Are there any other questions? If not, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Motion by Commissioner Keely.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
And ayes have it. There is no other business, so may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Keely, second by Commissioner Schultz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And we adjourn and the meeting is back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting and the actions of the EDA is always ratified by the members of the city council. So before us is a resolution to adopt the Burnsville Economic Development Authority 2026 Property Tax Levy. Mrs. Rhodey, I don't believe that you need to say anything else, members of the council. Your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
And the clerk has the division of the House. Thank you so much. Members of the council, members of our community, there are no other items to come before us this evening and a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Councilmember Schultz makes the motion, second by Councilmember Workman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you for being with us and have a good night.